Welcome to our regular meeting of council in person and live streamed electronically. A reminder of emergency preparedness week, happy 72 hour ready. Our opening of our meeting for land acknowledgement, the council and staff of the township of Monahue acknowledged that this sacred land on which the township of Monahue is now located, and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Ogonkun Anashabi Nation. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So move by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Craftry, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated May 7th, 2024, be approved as amended this date to move items A, B, C, D, E, H, L, and T from information to action. All in favor? And that's carried. Disclosure of interest now at any time during the meeting. So move by councillor Craftry, second by councillor Johnson, that the minutes of the previous meeting, zoning bylaw, public meeting dated April 9th, 2024, regular meeting of council dated April 16th, 2024, and special meeting of council dated April 23rd, 2024, be approved as presented.
Sorry, can we change this? Just continue moving on. Hopefully we'll get somebody else to second it on to the floor.
Uh, councillor Abbas.
Yeah.
So again, move by councillor Craftry, second by councillor Abbas, that the minutes of the previous meeting zoning bylaw, public meeting dated April 9th, 2024, regular meeting of council dated April 16th, 2024, and special meeting of council dated April 23rd, 2024, be approved as presented. All in favor? And that's carried. Business arising. So we have no delegations. We have a report of our municipal officers, please.
Thank you Chair. So this is in front of you this evening. As most of you are well aware, the police service board has changed to a Lanark County OPP detachment board composition. The original application was for a 20 member board, which now that, I think we had all of the 20 members in a room and it was very difficult to move forward and get anything moving with with 20 people around the table. So the new, the transition board that's working on the policies and setting the budget and all those things, um, have discussed it and it's been very clear that 20 is going to be very difficult. Uh, so what we're looking to do is go to each of the lower tier municipalities and request that we change the composition down to 12 members. So it would still be one elected rep from every lower tier, two provincial appointees instead of the four, and two public community reps instead of eight. Um, it will also lower the budgeted amount for each of the lower tier municipalities as well. We still have to put this application into the province. It may or may not be accepted, but we are by far the largest detachment board right, right now. Um, so it is recommended that council approve to move away from the 20 and go down to the 12.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. So move by councillor Johnson, second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that the council of the township of Monahue approved the proposed change in the Lanark County OPP detachment board composition to reduce the numbers to 12 from the current board of 20. All in favor? And that's carried. Many petitions bylaws. Move by deputy Reeve Carroll, second by councillor Abbas, that bylaw 4067-2024, being a bylaw to appoint members of council to boards, committees, and commissions, be read for a second and third time and pass, sign, and seal the 7th day of May, 2024. All in favor? And that's carried. No motion, notice of motion. So we'll move to our items that have moved forward.
Hey, I think I moved most of them forward. I'll do this quick because uh, it's something interesting and maybe some stuff that's good for retaining. I just wanted to bring forward obviously the uh, the thank you letter for Big Brother and Big Sisters because we do support them quite well and uh, and I know how much they support some of our Monahue residents should join too as well. But I just wanted to, you know, it's, it's nice to get that, that thank you letter and also to make sure that we keep in mind for uh, for next year's budget to make sure that we keep uh, supporting that group. Uh, to go into the media releases real quick. Uh, I think everybody's read them through. Uh, I think a couple of highlights are the, the monarch pledge, which is great that the, the Warren does every year with, with doing the uh, with doing that. And I think we're going to see some spillover at our, at our Monahue school too as well, uh, with the county doing some stuff there that uh, uh, for those type of gardens and everything else, which I think can be great. Uh, there's a few other things on there about the uh, the seeking of the, the wellness hub proposals and the, the transitional housing agreement amendment, which I think is a big one that there's a bit of a change to the one that's going on the old Willowdale. Uh, I think there's just been a little bit of um, apprehension, but it's still going forward, which is good, but it's just going to cost the county more money. But on the same token, I think uh, the deputy mayor from Perth made a good point saying even though it went up $120,000 uh, more than what we anticipated if the county would have came to us to begin with, with that amount, uh, we probably said we'd say, what is that? It still is a really, really, really good uh, price for hopefully getting uh, like another, another thing for homelessness. Um, and that kind of spills into the homeless uh, release things too as well, which I hope we're going to post kind of these on our website too as well, on our Facebook pages to make sure that it's out there and people understand it. And it kind of helps it really explain uh, uh, a lot about the homelessness and about the housing first idea of more and more trying to figure out how to get housing and housing in place for people. And it really breaks down like some people that were like, and those are real people too as well. Uh, they just changed their name, but real people talking about what their situations were to help them with that homelessness. Uh, and the housing first model of, you know, doing everything you can to make sure that you uh, find housing for people because it shows the costing uh, where i- if you don't do housing and where it can get more expensive uh, down the line. It's just, it's just always prevention is never as sexy as, as what the uh, as the repercussion side of it will go. Um, but it is so important that we do that, the, those things. And I always stress about, we don't want to be uh, and we could go, go that route, uh, municipalities that have seen large encampments and large big issues. Uh, and I think this proactive approach, I think we should be commending where, where we're going with that to make sure that we're trying to do everything we can to not go down uh, into a, a negative rabbit hole. So it's not being ignored, which I think is fantastic. Uh, so that's all the, those ones that. The next one is the uh, is H, is the compliance report, uh, which I think is great for, I think a lot of municipalities, well, I know we got this in the county too as well, to make sure that we are prepared uh, for uh, any emergency that would happen. And then, you know, I look at the checklist of the 13 big things and making sure that we have an operations center and we have a public education program. But I think also other things that are not on there that uh, we've done a really good job of staffing, they're a really good job, but is the updating of Rosedale Hall with that generator and everything else uh, that now gives us a place if we did have a disaster or we did have stuff going on uh, that people can go to and that they can make it safer. So I think A, we should be, you know, commanding staff for making sure that we're uh, we're on top of the emergency stuff. And I know your getting about that up saying this is emergency preparedness week too as well. So I think this is all kind of ties in nicely, uh, you know, and, and, and moving forward. And now with the new generator that uh, we also got through a grant for, for over here too as well. It makes us more prepared for any emergency stuff too as well. So I think those are all great things and it really ties in really, really nicely um, uh, for that. Uh, the musical ride thing I just want to bring up because this is, it says the Merrickville uh, uh, carriage.
I was going to say, was it supposed to be I?
Right. Well, maybe I didn't read that.
Oh. Maybe it was.
Yeah, I think it was supposed to be I. That's right. You know, when it was sent in, I was just going to bring up, I mean, it is in Monahue, but it is, it is kind of nice to, it's more just to make sure that we're, we're aware of it. I'm not looking to say that we, we can, we can put millions towards it, but it's also a good event for us to, to uh, to check out too as well. Uh, and I'm, I mean, I, I think it's posted pretty good out there, but it's nice to make sure that we posted. Uh, it is, it is an event that, that is in Monahue, which is nice too as well. And my last one I think was uh, oh yeah, this one, and this is, I think it's going to tie into a whole thing I want to bring for unfinished business. Uh, it's just more of a, uh, an operational budget funding. It's, anytime I see these ones, I just like to say like, I think we should have a resolution that supports that. Basically saying uh, we need the province to, to give us lower tiers more money. Uh, Toronto and Ottawa has really gotten like upgraded roads and Toronto's gotten like uh, good chunks of of, of operational money from the province, um, which is good for them. But I mean, us small guys also need to be not forgotten about too as well. And I, I think we should chime in if council scheme for that to just be a part of that, once in a, that squeaky wheel to talk about uh, more operational funding from province too as well. If everybody's amicable for, for, for that.
So just to kind of go off that tweet, sorry, through you. Um, I think that we need to look at potentially being bigger delegations though in that because uh, for example, with the farm tax incentive program, it's great. And I think there's a purpose behind it. But it used to be funded from the province, right? That 75 cents on the dollar that the farm don't pay. Now it's fully eaten and absorbed by the lower tier municipalities that house those farms. But the big cities like Toronto and where the big city centers are that people live, it doesn't impact them at all. So I think that it extends even beyond some of this and where we need to look at potentially being some of those delegations and saying, hey, don't forget about us little guys who are funding some of these things and we're not getting those funds back from the province the way we used to. So wholly agree that we support this, but I think that we should honestly even go that much further in some delegation.
And I wonder if we had a discussion with some of our, our county representatives too as well to kind of band together about that, right? So let's say.
And Chair through you. So uh, last year, the year before, I did reach out to county, um, the lower tiers and the county about potentially going together on a delegation in relation to the farm tax incentive program as one of the main ones. Um, and the CAO at the county was hugely on board. Some of the other lower tiers, not so much, like Carlton, things like that that don't, again, the farm doesn't really affect them. Um, but I think that if we can get earlier and have those conversations, I think that, and not only that, I know that some of the rent for county ones are very much on board to come with us for those as well. They have a lot of farmland. Um, and it's not that we want the farmers to pay more. We want the province, it's their program. So they should pay for the program, not, not the people who house the, the farms.
And then again, the farmers, the, the farmers feed the cities. So the cities, there should be a support backwards. Like it shouldn't all go to the cities. I mean, a lot of that needs to come back to us because of uh, of that lack of money too as well. And we talked about our building that we know we want to do too as well. And I think those are other delegation opportunities too as well to say like, like we need funding opportunities for that because to do that, it's hard to do it on a small tax base. So it's, you need to have those opportunities. So and I guess we're good for this too as well as everybody's on board for at least this process and we can keep pushing as we go.
Okay. So move by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Craftry, whereas all Ontario municipalities are prohibited from running budget deficits for operating purposes. And whereas all Ontario municipalities have similar pressures with respect to aging infrastructure and operating costs for policing. And whereas the city of Toronto has recently received provincial funding to cover a $1.2 million operating shortfall and approximately 12 million in federal and provincial funding for their police operating budget. And whereas the city of Toronto has one of the lowest tax rates in the province, approximately 42% less than the township of Monahue rural municipal tax rate. Now therefore be it resolved that the township of Monahue call on the province of Ontario, treat all municipalities fairly and provide equivalent representative operational budget funding amounts to all Ontario municipalities. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for all of those. So no unfinished business?
I was going to just talk, because I think one of the good roads, and I just wanted to just talk, maybe put like a minute about that too as well. I think the biggest thing from the good roads that we came from is that uh, the motto of the meeting was that everything's broken and we don't have the money to fix it. Uh, so it was really interesting. A lot of numbers that were thrown out there too as well as that they took out, the, one group took all of our asset management plans in Ontario to see like how far behind we are in all of our, basically just roads and bridges. And it's over $400 billion that all municipalities are behind on their infrastructure costs and, and in order to continue to maintain and to continue to do what they need to do for their roads. Um, another number, another one they had too as well is that there's, there's about 15,000 bridges in the province right now that were built back in the 50s and the 60s. Then a lot of that was paid for by uh, provincial money and federal money that came down through. And a lot of those are now coming to the end of life with not really a plan uh, from the province and the feds to help sort of support that too as well. Uh, so a lot of it was, you know, like, once again, is trying to push back saying like, a lot of these roads and a lot of these bridges were supported by the province and the federal governments to help build them, but we don't have the, the money to uh, to pay to fix them. And there's some municipalities that they're like 100 bridges in their, in their municipality. And they're like, we are closing bridges because we literally don't have an option. Um, and like, well, they, they, my last point too as well, because we have gravel roads too as well. And, and they did a lot of talk about gravel roads and about how to properly maintain them. And if you properly maintain them, which almost no municipality is giving it to the absolute, what the recommended is. Uh, like if you look at our road study, I think, you know, we, we should be putting in like a half a million dollars in the, in gravel. We're only putting in about uh, $240,000. Uh, so like it's, 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 but that's all that that can be managed and that's all that can be put in. And there's, and we have a four-year gravel cycle, uh, which I think, you know, is we're, we're doing the best we can in Monahue, but there, there's a lot of talk about, of, of uh, of roads around our, around the province that have about 10 or 15 years before they even see any gravel or any lift up or all that too as well because of the, the budget restraints. So a lot of it, once again, is the pushback against that, you know, we just, we just talked about uh, saying we need to have better solutions because municipalities are falling further and further behind. So it's good, one of those nice things about being at that thing is, is you kind of hear, okay, we're not like behind the eight ball. We're not, you know, like, you know, we're going to hear about road complaints, all that kind of stuff. But this is a, this is a provincial issue that uh, we need more support from. So I think there was a, it was a good conference as far as learning a little bit more about it. And there's one other thing about, uh, there was a great guy that, that talked about uh, safety and public safety of roads and how to make roads a lot safer. Uh, and looking outside the box of how to do that. Uh, and a lot of it was interesting where it's like, you know, people think making roads wider is makes them safer, but it actually doesn't. Uh, the, the data shows that when you make roads wider, thinking that it's making them safer, it makes people think that they're, they have more room. And it makes them less, a little bit more careless and actually accidents go up. So that's why keeping sometimes roads like a little wider. Another one I thought was really interesting, and this will be my last point, is some of the side roads or the back roads that are, that are quieter, that are paved roads, is they don't put a line down the middle. They put two white lines that are further in on the outsides and you basically are driving down that road as the middle. But when you're coming up to the other vehicles, you, you uh, you kind of go over on those white lines uh, so that when you're passing, but it also gives space for like that walker to go and everything else. And they should, and it seemed kind of kooky. But the, the, the neat idea behind that was is that it actually slows people down. And it makes the, there was less accidents when they did on those type of roads. Uh, so like, it looks weird, but you're like, but it actually made it safer and it made it, and, and it slowed people down. That was like the, the way to do it. So it was just a lot of interesting ways that I think is going to be interesting because we have the traffic advisory committee that we were at, at the county. Uh, that I'm really looking forward to like, you know, having those conversations to see like, hey, like maybe these are ideas. Those are the out of box ideas that I was always wondering how we can make our roads safer. So anyways, that was a conference. I think it was, I think it was, uh, there was a lot of value to it. And I think Ian, Ian was there too as well, or any public works manager. And I, and I believe he took a lot of value out of it too as well. So, thank you Reeve.
So now any questions from our audience? Online? Okay. So move by councillor Craftry, second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw 4068-2024, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council and its regular meeting held May 7th, 2024, be read for a second and third time and pass, sign, and sealed the 7th day of May, 2024. All in favor? And that's carried. Move by councillor Johnson and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council during the regular meeting of May 7th, 2024, at 6:18 PM, until May 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM or at the call of the chair. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much.
I'm ready. So I can do it. Welcome back everybody to our community of the whole meeting. Uh, so open the meeting with our man acknowledgement. The council and staff of the township of Monahue acknowledged that this sacred land on which the township of Monahue is now located, and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and ceded territory of the Ogonkun Anashabi Nation. Uh, so the adoption agenda, so move by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Craftry, that the community of the whole agenda dated May 7th, 2024, be approved as presented this date. All in favor? Scary. Any disclosure of interest? Let me know. There's no delegations, but our first report of municipal officers is the big zoning bylaw. Uh, Kirsten to come up. I guess you're going to drag Forbes out.
He's going to be in the front row.
We want, we want other protocols that we can pick on him too. So that's.
He's available. He'll, he'll get along.
Okay. Exciting times. This is a project that has been in the works for, I think, started last spring. Um, so before you just evening is the first draft passed, the discussion draft that came in February uh, that takes into account the comments that we received from the public, um, whether they be virtual or um, in person. And so we have incorporated some of those comments into revisions in this draft document. We've also, um, at the request of some members of council included page numbering for ease of reference, which was a great idea. Um, and I also uh, took a quick look through, actually not quick, a very intense look through uh, to make sure that everything looks good grammatically, fixed a couple of little um, little oversights that were missed the first time. So I think at this point, I would like to open it up to council and just see if you have any comments with respect to the proposed revisions that are noted in this document.
Thank you Kirsten.
Yeah.
I guess we'll start with that. And so you're looking for like, so you have the, the obviously the little comment boards there too as well as.
Right.
I guess the comment side of the case from council, I'll open it up. If you agree or disagree, I like, maybe we should side to the side that we agree with most of them. And if we disagree with any of them, maybe like speak up.
Sure. That would be good.
So if there's anything that, or something missing or anything on those slides, I'll open up the council if you have anything. See a lot.
Yeah. One of the key things I, I wanted to just point out is, um, you know, we really appreciated the comments from the public. It's unfortunate that there were so few. Um, but I'm very pleased that one of the, the first comment that was received uh, was very um, well articulated and allowed for us to have a different perspective on a change that we were looking to make to give more leniency for people to have livestock. But what we did was create a bit of an obstacle or barrier for people who are already compliant. So um, this individual did raise a very important comment and we have taken that comment into consideration, agreed with the comment that was proposed. And there is a revision to the general provisions as well as the provisions in the rural zone to accommodate those changes.
So yeah, so like, like, I think you're talking about the, the size of the, uh, of the lot and everything else. And I, yes, I've been nuts. And that would, that will be incorporated into the, the new one, which is uh.
That's right. So currently the zoning bylaw says, um, in the rural zone that lots under two hectares wouldn't be permitted to have livestock. So the new provision would allow for livestock on, I'll call it a prorated basis based on livestock units. Um, so that's put in the general provision. So in the rural zone, it says two hectares for livestock, but then there's sort of like an exemption in brackets, it says, you know, for lots less than two hectares, C-section um, for, I think it's agricultural uses for hobby farms in the general provision. So there will be an allowance for uh, those people who want to have a few livestock on smaller sized properties. And that was something that kind of came to the forefront when, when the whole chicken conversation started last year. So um, to sort of go back to the livestock in the backyard hen provisions in the zoning bylaw, it would allow for backyard hens up to six in any zone that allows for residential use as the pri- as a primary permitted use. So for example, if there were lots at this end of the municipality that were large enough to accommodate and could meet those setbacks of the 15 meters from the coop in the, in the run, from the rear and interior side yards, not exterior or front yard, then they would be permitted to have backyard chickens. I don't know if there will be very many along the periphery of Smith Falls that would qualify for that, but there is that option in there.
I think a lot of that, that provision about, about that change, which I think is a great change, uh, basically allows people that are doing it right now, that they should be allowed to do it, or not, not going to be able to do it. I don't think, we, we've, we've heard about this in other places where that has happened and, and all of a sudden like not hundreds of people start getting chickens, I don't think. So it's a, so I think it's the right thing to, to help, you know, make it, make it work for the people that are, that are trying to do it right now, which is fantastic. So. Any other questions from council?
Comments?
Comments? Yes.
Thank to staff for all their hard work on this document that's been coming forward. It's great that we actually had some public feedback. It might not have been a lot, but it's a start. Because that's the thing. It's like, we're here, we're giving the public the chance to speak forward. Because it's, we pass stuff and then after the fact they start complaining. Like we gave you opportunity to come forward. So this is great that we did have someone came forward and that the work done by yourself, by Forbes and other staff, it's greatly appreciated.
Um, if I could just make one quick comment, um, I wanted to say that, you know, perhaps the reason there weren't a lot of comments was maybe people were happy with the document. Um, we weren't taking anything away. We were adding, giving people more opportunities that than were there previously. So that could account for not having a lot of um, public feedback and hopefully, yeah.
It makes a lot of sense. And I think the small little feedback was a positive one.
Yeah.
That's actually really worth listening. There wasn't a whole lot of feedback. It's probably, it was a fairly well worded document. I also think there was a lot of positive in what you guys were saying and the fact that it's, it's a working document. It's, it's not concrete. It's not permanent. We can always amend it, change it and modify it to suit the needs of the township if, if, if need be. And I think that speaks volumes to your that you're, you're not setting a line saying this, this is the law forever. This is a way to move forward and progress and, and allows for deviation later on. So a great job on, on the, you guys.
Thank you. One other comment I just wanted to make with respect to the schedules that are attached to the zoning bylaw, which I absolutely love. I think they're very visually appealing and very, very user friendly. Anywhere where you see uh, the RU zones with the special exceptions, those numbers may change, um, because there were some special exceptions that were proposed to be removed by allowing for semi-detached and duplex dwellings as automatic permitted uses in the rural zone. So some of those numbers might be altered. There's one zoning um, area that's identified as RUX. And the reason for that is there were some duplication of numbers in previous bylaws. So they will all be renumbered where appropriate. And uh, for, for my ease of reference and for anyone who's utilizing this zoning bylaw in future with the special exceptions under the, each of the zones as they come up, will also identify the bylaw by which they're passed and not just the law and concession, which isn't always the easiest thing to track. Because there are a lot of properties within one law and one concession sometimes. So.
Right.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just have two comments, but yeah, no, okay. Okay. So I got, I, my first comment was just about, once again, I'm under the hobby firm thing. I brought this up once before, but just about, I guess I show me the kind of keeping breeding, grazing, grazing of livestock and or poultry other than the mystic pets for the personal use of the household, operating the hobby firm and to execute the agricultural use of her and define operated for a commercial business. My only thing was that I said before was just about, it's just about the permitting the small sales or putting that in there to make sure that it's, that it's in there because we don't want to have the person selling eggs at the end like that. Now that would be not considered right, right? They're going to want to make sure that we're permitting uh, that in, in our, in our zoning bylaw.
That's, that would be permitted. We're, we're just trying to distinguish between the, the small scale personal use versus the, the larger commercial.
Sale. Cause even though it doesn't strictly say that, I just don't want it to be like misinterpreted by anybody or someone that can go down that line. That's why I just want to make sure that there cannot be a misinterpretation there.
I think we can clarify that in the wording, but I agree with, with your position that someone that has a dozen hens and all of a sudden is getting a dozen eggs a day needs to be able to have a sign out at the end of the road saying eggs, right? It just, it's just. And somebody that plants too many zucchini needs to be able to have a stand out at the, the end of the road saying free for taking, right? So I, I think all of that. I get, if I was going to dial it right down. I get, if I was going to dial it right down, Deputy Reeve, I would say that home occupations would allow that. But I think your point's well made and we can clarify that. Um, small scale retail of produce and, and goods from the farmers or the property is permitted.
Yeah, cause somebody, they, they might have a couple cows and they sell a couple quarters off, I mean, that could be like.
Hundred percent.
And you can do that under the, you know.
Hundred percent, and I, I think that we can very easily clarify that. Um, and make sure that it's not subject to interpretation, but it's intuitively there and people can see it.
Perfect, thank you. And my, my only other point was uh, was the additional residential units in the accessory structure, which requires a separate section located in, uh, on a lot less than one hectare. Uh, we had talked about. Uh, making that point eight of a hectare to make that it, it fits the uh. Is that right?
Uh, we're referring to section L.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Four point two L.
I know it's a minor change, but it's like, it's, it's one of those, one of those things like if, if. Point eight is still uh, two acres, so it'd be the two acre sort of number. Uh, if, uh, as far as like, so if you have that, that uh, a two acre lot and you wanna put that, that extra one on there. You're not made to do a, a hundred G in order to uh, in order to put that, that, that exist, extra unit on there.
Okay. Made it over there.
Just leans it up a little bit, I think, as far as a more appropriate number.
Sure. So I've amended four point two L, uh, amend from one hectare to point eight.
And so, and always counts, it's obviously like, like reasonable to that too as well. Um, besides that, I mean, hey. We only pick out all things out of the whole thing. I mean, I think that's, I think this is really, once again, like to, to echo uh, what's already been said, like it's, it was, I think this is a. The best that it can possibly be at this point, and uh, it's a kudos to, to staff for, for doing this, so. And on that point, I'll, I'll ask over to Ally for your points.
Thanks, um, Chair. So through you, I think that was gonna be mine. I know Kirsten, you hate having. Kudos, um, but uh, this was Kirsten's first zoning bylaw update and she's done an exceptional job with the assistance of Forbes. Um, and it's thorough, it's complete, uh, you went over and above as far as transparency by ensuring that every property owner got a notice um for the public. Um, meeting and, and most, I just wanna give kudos. I think that. You brought a document that's fair, it's positive changes, it's listening to the community and what we've heard in the past. Um, so kudos to both Forbes and Kirsten, excellent team working together and bringing this forward, so. Again, just same thing that I think um, that they went over and above honestly and, and what they did and um. That's why we have the document we have in front of us.
And thank you to council for the opportunity to get to be a part of this project. I know that when we had the discussion, the budget discussions last year with respect to. Whether we were gonna be doing our fees and, and what the process was gonna be, and council was very gracious to allow me to be a part of this. And I appreciate that. It's been a, a good project for me, um. Very familiar with the document now. I can't complain about it since I was during a much part of the project, so. Thank you.
Awesome, this is very exciting. All right, so let's pass this, that's fantastic, so let's say uh. So we're all in agreement for B? Yeah, okay, so moved by Councilor Craft Tree and a second by Councilor Johnson. The council proceeded option B or into relation to draft zoning bylaw presented at this date. All in favor? And is unanimous, beautiful. Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Thank you, Boris.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I um. Uh, I don't have uh many opportunities like this where it's such a positive environment. And you guys create that and you've got great staff and uh, it's always a pleasure, it really truly is and uh, well done, thank you.
It's nice to hear that perspective from you as well, as well as far as the city goes around to a lot of different municipalities and see. Uh, what they're like and, and uh, it's nice to hear the positive feedback that uh, that he says coming back, so. All right, so we're gonna go through this and we can uh, we can shoot the grill personally if you want to, uh, I, I think we might not, uh, so. The uh, first quarter planning report, uh, any questions on that? Oh, Ally's gonna ask one.
Oh goodness, sorry. Well, I have either, no. So I think, I just wanna make a comment on this, that um, as much as Kirsten keeps track of um, obviously the consents and site plans and uh, the actual documents that are submitted. What's not on here, and again, I think I've said this at both quarterlies, is the amount of phone calls and time put in. We, we have a lot of interest. In the planning side of things in Montague right now, which is, is great, um, but Kirsten's very, very thorough with people and very patient and goes through the step, and I think. Um, that helps as far as probably you receiving very few phone calls about complaints as far as that goes as well. Um, so just not included in this is the hours put in, uh, as far as phone calls and things like that. I think her extension is probably almost wore out from the front. So just to note that in here that there's substantial time, uh, cause I know it looks like the applications are down. But sometimes it's the time that goes into prior to the application going in, that's all I want to say.
I think that's well said, it's a lot of that stuff too, as well as like, there's a lot of conversations and talking before something actually happens and uh, and I can tell you, obviously before Kirsten came. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about confusion of planning, people not knowing what's going on, uh, how to do it. Uh, couldn't get answers back, but wants to get there to figure that out. Uh, so I think it's really made it, obviously it's made a humongous difference, uh, having Kirsten, there was, there was a very, very. Uh, smart move, uh, to make sure that we went in this direction, so I think it's fantastic, so.
So on that note, uh, there was a meeting just last week. And thank you Kirsten for sitting in with it, but what was said by the individual was here about, um, we are probably one of the. Best planners and thorough in her information in providing documents ahead of time, answering questions ahead of time. And uh, she was very clear to let me know that, so Kirsten was there to hear it, but I am very proud to publicly announce that as well, so thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay.
I don't even wanna talk about my report now.
Any comments on your report, Val?
Well, I just wa- I just wanted to sort of clarify, because you can see the first uh, the first quarter comparison between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty three. And while the applications are down, the, the difference in the amount of revenue generated isn't. Very drastic, but keep in mind that we did increase our fees for some of our planning services, so. That, that's sort of reflected, and then as we move forward, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, it'll probably level out a little bit more. Um, as Ally was mentioning, you know, there are a lot of calls and inquiries. Um, and my goal in having those conversations with people in advance and being very thorough. Is I want people to have, uh, to the best of my ability, successful applications that are going to be delayed at later point, so. Um, there's going to be a report actually coming um, to a meeting in May with some more changes. In the world of planning, bill one eighty five and, and the, the provincial policy statement will be the provincial planning statement, so there's, there's. Stuff coming down that are, are reversing some of the poor planning decisions that the provincial government made through bill. Twenty, I can't even keep all the numbers straight. I can't, there's been so many legislative changes just in the last two years, but I will be bringing a report in May with those changes. Hopefully, most of them are for the good. There are a couple that are a little bit um. Not fabulous, but I, I will be bringing the report back. Um, okay, that's it for planning.
It is pretty crazy, we hear that from the county too as well, where they're trying to like, say the same thing as they try to get their, figure out what's going on with, with the changes and everything else. There's been a lot of changing in planning over the last few years and it's been uh. And good for you for like keeping us updated and, and informed as far as, and, and keeping it less confusing for us too as well, which I think is crazy, so.
The unfortunate thing uh, with these proposed changes is the province doesn't give a very large window for commenting, so. They don't really take into account that the municipalities that are gonna be reviewing and, and commenting on these might meet once or twice a month. So they give you a thirty day period for which to digest ten pieces of legislation and then prepare a report. If you can understand what they're saying to bring to your council, to explain it to them, so that you can prepare comments to submit back to them. And uh, yeah, so i- it's unfortunate that the province. Thinks that little of our opinion that they give such a short window of commenting time, so. Such as provincial government.
Game that we play.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the pushback that, maybe, yes, we can push down with a pushback that comes back from that has helped reverse some of that too as well, right? So it's a, uh.
Yeah.
And uh, I don't need to make comments for that too as well, so that is it, like all the, all of that little chatter turns into the big chatter that make that happen. Very good, so we'll uh, move by Councilor uh Johnson, a second by Reeve Jennings, by council, accept the first quarter planning report presented to state as information, all in favor? Uh, one of my favorite ones is septic report, uh. Uh, I think that's pretty well self-explanatory.
Yeah, well, septic has been really busy, uh, building permits are up too, so I, we're starting to see that rise there now, so. We have a great uh, septic inspector.
Yeah, she's doing fantastic for us and, and uh, and is keeping this moving for us and, and I'm, you know. Fire for that, so.
Finding our groove.
Find our groove.
We are.
Keep things flowing, uh. Moved by Reeve Jennings, a second by Councilor Bass, that council accepts the first quarter septic report presented this date as information, all in favor?
It's gonna get worse.
Checking myself right now, so uh, thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're off the hook now. Uh, we have the uh, M L E O and animal control report, you can see that uh. They're busy and uh, you know what, it's, it, they've got a lot of very good positive feedback uh, as far as. The end results of a lot of this, so uh, this is a really positive, I don't know if Ally has any points at all on it, uh.
Uh, so Chair through you, it's that, they've been extremely busy, um, and continue to be. We will be bringing forward um, draft bylaw. To deal with um, some of the property standards issues that are repeat offenders for um, us to be able to um. Get some of the funds back that we pay out to bylaw. So basically if it's, if it's a property that we have to go back to on a continual basis, because there's an order. Cleaned up and then the next month it's in the same condition, that we have the ability to charge to get some of those costs back from the bylaw. Um, because we have to implement something to try and prevent some of that. But other than that, it's, it's, the agreement has worked exceptionally well, we're very happy, um. It's just that we have a lot of ongoing items that some of it been historical, so. Um, and we have some ones that, uh, in his words are interesting and new to him, and he was uh, chief of police for a number of years, so. Uh, we have some interesting things as well, but all in all, um, extremely satisfied with what's happening.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's really great, because it's not uh, the majority of our population, this is like ninety percent of our population is, is, is not on this list, it's, it's, it's. That small, small uh portion that, you know, that I think the bigger part of our population want us to deal with. Um, and I think it's fantastic that this is being dealt with and uh, and it's just gonna make our, our challenge cleaner, nicer, safer, uh, and overall better. Um, and hopefully also uh, makes uh neighbors get along with each other a little better too as well, so. Any comments from council as far as that goes? Perfect, awesome. So moved by Councilor Bass and second by Councilor Craft Tree, the council accepts the first quarter M L E O animal control report presented this date as information, all in favor? And that's carried on. Next in the water report, brings all the explanatory, biggest thing is that. The water is good, uh, so, well, by Councilor Craft Tree and second by Councilor Johnson, that council accepts the first quarter water report presented to state as information, all in favor? That's carried. Uh, first quarter fire report, I don't know if Miles had any comments uh that was given to you at all, Ally or.
They've been busy, Chair through you, they've been busy, um, there's been a number of calls, uh, some bigger fire. Um, events, maybe not as big as some of the other municipalities, but they've been busy um, as far as that goes, so hopefully it slows down.
And the training that they keep, keeps going to as well, which is great.
Training is exceptional, yeah, and, and the pub ed and all of their community events and those things, yeah.
Like we have, we are very fortunate for the fire department that we obviously have, and we say that every quarter, we, we should always say that every quarter, because exactly what you're saying, they, they stay up to date, they keep us safe. Uh, they're out in the public, uh, at our, at our events helping out, uh, just a, obviously a, an exceptional, uh, exceptional group that we have. Uh, so moved by Councilor Johnson and second by Reeve Jennings, the council accepts the first quarter fire report presented this date as information, all in favor? Public Works, speaking of busy.
Yeah, so thank you Chair, so this is coming from me because our public works manager um didn't start until after this quarter and I was. The lucky recipient to be the public works manager for a few months as well. So they were busy, again, a little bit seasonally different than normal, just based on the weather, so we did get a lot of brushing operations done on Maguire to repair. Maguire to get the drainage and the entrance permits done to do the Maguire, the final roadwork next year. Um, we did brush it on the Blocklin Road, which again, with the new agreement we went back with, became our responsibility this year, so. Again, public works went above and beyond, put notices in every property owner's mailbox ahead of time to advise them that this was gonna be happening. And this will be a continued communication strategy for us, so that we're not getting angry phone calls, we're getting prepared and then. Can call if they have any questions in relation to what it means for the brushing, because we do use the machine, not hand brushing, so it's not quite as nice. Um, so that went really positive, um, and we got some actually really positive feedback on that too, that we were very communicative to them. Signage and install, so our GO Evo, so our sign reflection was completed and our signs are actually in. Good condition, which means our public works group has been doing a great job throughout the year, or our signs get stolen a lot, so they get replaced often, so that they're always reflective. Um, so we're actually probably in a better position than we thought. We were going to be even with that, so. Those signs that were in poor condition will get replaced this year, but that's already done in the first quarter, so now it's just to get them ordered and replaced. Uh, the regular equipment, housing maintenance, but in that time, uh, we also built a ramp, there's a photo there just in case anybody didn't know what we meant. Um, to load the trucks with the winter sand, um, or grit and the salt. So right now, previously they'd always use the excavator, excavator is a much more expensive piece of equipment than our backhoe. Um, and being in contact with salt, nothing like that as far as equipment, so we've changed the method, because our contractor also uses that piece of equipment. So we've changed up, built a ramp to make it safer. Or easier to load, everyone's happy, the contractor, everyone's happy that this is now um, how we changed our approach, so this is great. Um, culverts, so we've had a number of beaver issues, actually one over on uh Van Exen, where they had to go in and deal with. Um, the beaver dams and things like that, that was actually starting to wash out the bit of the airport there. Um, the Gilroy Road, uh, unopened road allowance, it was damaged by an individual who took a bulldozer down it, so that's been fixed, culverts replaced, and the individual has been charged with destruction of public property. Um, microsurfacing has been awarded to Miller Group, you guys are aware of that, you've awarded it, um, the paving work, same thing, so paving is actually, so those projects are gonna be starting this week. Um, so we're well ahead of the curve, um, as far as that goes with some, there's some tree removal that needs to come down on Matheson Rito and then. That project will start, roads need study is underway. We will bring forward to council and to all of the public dates for a public open house, where they can ask questions and get that kind of information. Maguire Pinery, we're still working on that, the surveying has been complete on Pinery and we'll bring any updates forward. Um, gravel maintenance, again, we did some grading, things like that, it was a difficult with freezing, lack of frost, all those. Rain, all those things playing into effect with us. Waste um, is actually down twenty one percent in the first quarter, uh, we'll obviously keep an eye, is it with the change in the garbage bags? Um, we've had a number of composters, so the free composters, I think we've given away. Thirty at the beginning of this year already, so um, which is great, because that reduces household waste is very heavy, um. For the organic waste, so reducing that and obviously transitioning to that type of approach is great news and we still have people coming in, we actually ordered twenty more. Um, so that's all great news. Recycling is no longer us, so we don't have the stats on the recycling for you. Uh, and then just general operations of what we're kind of working on, um, the buildings, so pre-qualifications have been completed. Uh, six of the eight, two submitted met the pre-qualification, the tender for the building should be going out in May, so. That is still ongoing and happening in the background as well.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions from council? Thank you, Allison. Any questions from council at all? Also the garbage, you can't, you're saying, having, uh, you know, obviously a reduction, which is kind of nice, but also like, I think the word is, the word, it took a while to get the word. Officially, everybody knew we had the composters or now the word is that you're getting. The pickup on them, which is fantastic, which was, uh, you know, you know, a big rant from the county for that. So it's, uh, but I guess the, the actions that we, that we bought.
So we still had funds through the county for that. Yep. So, and then keeping in mind, I didn't actually put it in here and I should have. Um, we put out the free mulch to the residents that was brushed from actually last April's. Um, ice storm slash windstorm, uh, that we had. So that free mulch, there's actually been quite a few people coming to take that as well and, um. We're getting kudos and we also partner with the school on food cycler. So all of April, because of earth, uh, day being in there, we're providing daily. Um, information with the drawings from the, the kiddos from the school. And, um, the county loved it. So it was all part of their initiative. They were loving seeing the drawings every day. Yeah. So.
Yeah, the uptake on the, uh, that sort of environmental side that, that kind of came from the county, uh, we really have. Really went over and above, I think, and I think that's a great job from the staff and also getting the school moved in with that is, it's just been. Nothing but positive effects there. So it's been, it's been fantastic. Do we know whether the, uh, the gravel, uh, we're gonna start getting the gravel out on the certain roads that we. That we have for this year?
So that normally starts anytime after, um, the half loads. So we'll be starting in May, like shortly. Actually, they're doing some of our roads ourselves, like some of the. Smaller ones that we're doing ourselves are happening right now. We're doing it this week. Um, the rest of them will be happening until I even kill soon shortly thereafter.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? See none. So moved by Reeve Jennings and second by councillor Bass, the council accepts the first quarter public works. Uh, report presented this date as information. All in favor? That's carried. Over time report, anything you wanna talk about? It's like pretty well bang in line as far as what you'd expect. So.
Yeah, if anything, we're ultimately under model works. We had a easy winter, um, water similar because every weekend we have. Uh, water testing and, um, there's no concerns as far as budgeted numbers at this point in time.
Rain lines. That's fantastic. Thank you. So any questions for council? So moved by councillor Bass and second by councillor Crabtree, the council accepts the first quarter staff over time, twenty twenty four reports presented to this date as information. All in favor? Budgetary control report, I think everybody's read. I don't, I don't value it. I need to go through all the things that, that are, that you've already explained. Uh, unless you have anything else you wanna add?
It's pretty early in the year.
Any questions from council? Anything jump out of that shit at all as far as, uh, oh, there's nothing. We'll jump out because it's, uh, going well. Uh, all right. Sounds good. So moved by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, uh, council accept the first quarter budgetary. Control report, uh, presented this date as information. All in favor? That's carried. Capital grants. We have to pick the financials. I think once again, it's all there. We see what we have. Unfortunately not been successful, but also what we have been successful at, what we're waiting for. Do you have any? Nothing really kind of.
No, there's a couple of grants out, uh, right now that will also be applying to. There's two open right now. So, um, they close in May that we'll be applying to as well. But nothing of any substantial size. We're waiting for some of those big ones that the province announced and the feds announced in their budgeting. Um, other than that, pretty early in the capital side of things, but. We are working on the fencing. Actually, the post just got installed today for the fencing to be completed at Rosedale too. So. It feels, it's only May. It feels like we're already in July and August because of the weather that we've had, but we're, we're plugging right along and. There's no anticipation of anything being kind of left off by all means.
Oh, question aside.
That's great. Hey, any questions? We're good. So moved by, uh, councillor Johnson and second by Reeve Jennings, that council accepts the first quarter twenty twenty four capital and grant projects. Report presented this date as information. All in favor? Uh, last one is, uh, more about garbage and about, uh, the contracts. So I'll let Ellie get into that one.
Thank you, Chair. So this is kind of a proactive report, to be honest. Our current agreement, um, with waste collection and disposal goes until, um. June, May thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Um, we have, we met earlier this year. March, I guess. Uh, I did meet with, um, the individual from G I M to discuss what our options were. Monique is kind of in one of those situations where we don't have a waste site. We don't have a transfer site. So we really do rely on contractors and suppliers to provide these services to us. Um, currently this arrangement has been going very well, um, and the pricing that we receive is. Is, is more than fair, um, as far as what other municipalities are paying as well. Um, so what we're requesting is that we do, uh, an extension of our current contract for an additional five-year term beyond. The May thirty one, twenty twenty five for a couple of reasons. Um, the current contract is based on cola. Um, each year and there is, uh, a stipend in there about the price of fuel based on a plus minus of ten cents. Per liter, which is still, it was based off a really low cost. So it, I think last year cost us twelve hundred dollars difference over the whole year. It was nothing substantial. Um. The other reason for this is that we're still in the middle of the transition for the blue box items. All of the municipalities have to do the transition by twenty twenty six. We were one of the earliest municipalities to transition our blue box over to the province. Um, that was a bit of a headache and a bit of a problem as far as the change. Even though it was the same provider, it was just the change in service, right? Because the province is trying to figure out the cheapest routes, the easiest solutions, all those things. So our concern with that is as well is that as that continues to change and the other municipalities start to come on. That still could be growing pains happening with our recycling, whereas with our G I M agreement. Um, it's kind of been steady and fast. It's been that same service. Um, if it gets missed here and there, they're very good that if you call them, they come out with a half ton and grab it if it's a one-off, right? If you're, if every week that you're calling, they know you're just maybe not putting it out in time. Um. So we think that honestly, it's a fair agreement. It locks us in for five years where we know from a budgeting perspective, especially right now in an economy. That it's been very up and down and we saw calcium and things like that that have skyrocketed in price. Um, along with that, there are, um, some additional changes as far as the disposal fee. Um, which is more than cola. You'll see that it's a fourteen percent increase out of June first, twenty twenty five. We're gonna have that no matter what if we go in. Um, it's still only at a hundred and thirty five dollars a metric ton where other municipalities are paying one fifty five to one seventy five, um, a metric ton. So they saw that increase on their end at Moose Creek, so they have to obviously pass that on to us as well. Um, this also allows them to upgrade their fleet. So when we extend a contract for five years, they know that they have our contract for five years. To be able to put money into that capital side for them as well, because no different than us, their trucks have now doubled in price. Everything has changed, right? So, um, with that, they've al- they also do our large item pickup, which we've changed to the two days or the two times per month. They've also provided pricing though, which is, uh, I think it's a good price. To do the drop off day here again, that large item drop off day for the people who, um, have several items and maybe wanna come do it and not go. Um, and it's still a lower price than if they drove it to G I M themselves. That, with what they're providing us. So, um, again, it's just an option, but these are the things that I feel like they. They have done a great job. Um, they're happy with being the supplier to Monique. They think that our residents are respectful and, um. It's been a good working relationship. Obviously, it's always up to council for us to go to R F P. If that's the decision, we probably will be putting those documents out. This fall, um, to prepare and get things ready. Um, keeping in mind, because we wanna be able to communicate that to the ratepayers if for some reason the supplier does change as well. Cause again, with the change in the transition, we've received hundreds of phone calls. Um, with that, so it's trying to kind of keep that one service steady and fast while. This other service that we don't have any control over figures themselves out up to twenty twenty six. Again, it's proactive. It's, we're a little ahead of the game, but we'd rather be that way than last minute and getting. Extremely high pricing from somebody because we wait and drop them all.
Because we, we go to tender and like, and like, I mean, G I M is probably gonna come back with the, the best tender anyway, so.
Yeah, so in the past they have, but, um, there was other organizations that writes, but I know with discussing with other municipalities that are going to R F P. They're already paying more than we are. So, um, and they're, so they're going out. Uh, I think they stopped seeing some of our pricing, to be honest.
So just, uh, so we get more of a hometown discount with an extension as opposed to the R F P?
So through, so maybe not even so much like a hometown discount, but more so that they've been with us for so long. They know our area. They know what to expect. They know that like. An average tonnage, they have all that data to be able to say, yeah, we're good, which is extending with cola.
So the continuity works for their side also.
Absolutely. Yeah. It, it works both parties. Yeah.
But there's also a risk where they're back at the hundred, that they, they may be very, you know, extra couple of dollars out of there. That you, you could have that risk. Where, where, right now, because you have that relationship.
Yeah.
You, by showing some good faith, it could go to benefit us for another five years and.
And just to say the good faith and that relationship, they also donate a number of vehicles to our fire department every year for training and auto wax and all those things that. They usually pick and even to the mining machines, they drop it off and pick it up for free. So they do those community things as well. So, um. They've kind of almost been like somewhat of a community. I know they're a private business, but a bit of a community partner as well in some of those things. So they do support. Us and our fire department, all those things with the training, because they were, fire was just there last week.
April twenty fourth.
And did, or a couple of weeks ago, and did two or three vehicles.
Two vehicles.
Yeah. So they provide those types of things without charging us as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we, we went through other garbage, like imagine the, the, the headaches as they try to figure out the roots and all that kind of stuff. Do as well, like, I'm gonna get a lot of phone calls. So like, I mean, if you keep your garbage the right way, then it really reduces.
Garbage and money is a hot topic.
And, and when you look at the numbers. Yeah, yeah. So. It, it just kind of sets us all up. Like I said, it sets them up that they can replace their capital and, and provide those newer vehicles. And also set that up for us far as budgeting to know what we're gonna be anticipating.
Uh, so what question for the, yeah, that'd be great if we even have a drop off if people want instead of putting it in the driveway, they wanna bring it in somewhere. Would there, would there be any value or, or is it more complicated for them to just have a drop off at like that one day a year? At their facility and they just charge that price? Or is that just something that they, they don't wanna try to facilitate? It's easier for them to bring it in.
I think it'd be difficult for us. Like we would have to be able to provide somebody something to give to them and then that's an extra cost for us that we're gonna. I think you're just kind of taking from one and putting it to another. So we have to provide some kind of card or some kind of sticker that we're gonna pay for. Or we could just pay for them to do it here. Um.
Like their, like their driver's license with the.
Well, not necessarily. I think that it would be that if we're gonna provide something, it would have to be, are we providing like one truckload for free? Or we, what are we providing, right? Is it two pieces of furniture, whatever the case is? So I think that it's more so that it would be here, we would have staff here to monitor and be able to look after all of it.
Drop off would need, they're still in charge for that, for people to bring whatever they're dropping off.
Yeah. So, but the thing is that I think that we could do it, they wouldn't necessarily have to buy stickers, but we could have the office. If it was a Saturday, we could have the office open. They come in and say, we have three pieces. So it's team ups, right? And we'd be here, the post saying, you gotta come into the office between nine and four thirty, get stickers, do this. It's like, we're here Saturday, the doors are open to buy, drop, and it's all one service.
We're gonna keep it consistent as far as the pricing goes to as well, to what the pickup would be, the pickup service would be, instead of like going to G I M and saying, okay, we're gonna weigh it and all that kind of stuff and play that game.
It would still be substantially cheaper.
It would just be better. It would just be better to have them, uh, for here for that. Yeah.
But I just, I personally feel, I wasn't here in the time that you guys had the drop offs of prior to COVID. Um, I just feel like if we're gonna be here and it's gonna be on a Saturday, I think the office should be open to allow people to pay debit and do all those things, that the money being looked at are here.
Yeah.
Um, because not everybody can get to the office between nine and four thirty to get stickers either.
Correct, yeah.
So.
So we had that large drop up day, come in, in the office and everything else and, uh.
But we'll bring a report to council on that. We're not just gonna include it. It'll be, are we looking at doing this? Cause I think that's one of the feedback we have received is some people saying, could we do a large item day again? Um, so I have several things and it would just be easier for me to drop it all at once.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank Ellie and the staff for being proactive. It's nice to be ahead of things and so far, different. Different policies and sector done up here, it's been working there first. So I think, congratulations on bringing this ahead of time and possibly, yeah. I'll be fifty five years.
Keep it as smooth as possible, yeah. Thanks, councillor Bass. Any other questions? Uh, can move by Reeve Jennings and second by councillor Bass, that council direct staff to enter into an extension of the current agreement with Glenview Iron and Metal. Effective June first, twenty twenty five, for an additional five years, which should end at May thirty first, twenty thirty. The council direct staff to bring forward the violent to enter an extension of the current waste service agreement with Glenview Iron and Metal, G I M, until. May thirty first, twenty thirty. All in favor? Hold on, folks. Hold on, Trevor, for your, uh, first meeting. Awesome. Good. And, uh, on that note, before we, uh, we adjourn, is there any burning questions from the audience at all? Seeing none on the online wor- world?
None.
Nothing there. Nothing on Twitter, the Facebook, the Snapchat, nothing like that. Take talk away. Uh, moved by councillor Bass and second by councillor Crabtree, the committee of the whole meeting for July seventh, twenty twenty four, now be. May, when is it? July? You said we're almost halfway through summer. That's like. It's May seventh, twenty twenty four, now be adjourned at seven oh six. P M. All in favor?